And we're bringing forward to you an ordinance to change the funding policy.
I should probably just mention that the Open Meetings Act is in the back of the chambers.
Oh, you want that? Sure.
All right.
Now we can hear.
Okay.
Thank you for coming to speak to us about the pension.
So as we move forward with this change in the funding policy, Paul Lutamski, who's our pension officer, will give some of the historical information regarding this. And then we also have our actuaries here who can speak to some of the technical aspects of Appendix B. And hopefully collectively, we can all answer the questions you may have about this funding policy change. All right. So with that, I'll refer to Paul to kind of give the historical background. And then we can respond to any questions you may have. And then we can certainly bring our actuaries forward to answer technical questions.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we leave time to actually review the ordinance itself and go through it. This appendix is the bulk of it, so appreciate that.
Yes, okay. My speech starts basically with the origins of this funding policy change. Currently, the funding policy in the Lincoln Municipal Code states that the city is to contribute normal cost plus admin expenses as a minimum. The new language states that the city contributions will be determined pursuant to Appendix B. And that's what I just handed out. You'll see that there's some language highlighted in yellow that I'm going to refer to in an example at the end of my presentation. Back to the ordinance, you can see the old language crossed out regarding normal cost inclusive of admin expenses. And the new language underlined as the contribution shall be determined to the funding policy in Appendix B. So we'll get to Appendix B in just a second. On the second page, I wanted to show you the other change that had some cleanup language regarding the mortality table that is used and also the assumed earnings rate, just some old language that we updated. And on to Appendix B. This is really, and we're very grateful for it, an outcome of a recommendation made by the Citizen Committee back in May of 2016. They recommended that the city institute a funding policy wherein the city contributed the greater of normal cost or the ARC. At that time, ARC was an acronym used, stood for actually required contribution. Something that was, I think, specific to GASB terminology. So we've gotten a little more specific and just in the policy referred to it as normal cost plus amortization of the unfunded accrued liability. City worked with our plan actuary, who is here today, to develop Appendix B, the funding policy. So let me go and have a look at that with you. Three pages, and I'm not going to read every word, but I am going to read some words and touch on the sections. Section one is an introduction. Policy pertains to the City of Lincoln Police and Fire Pension Plan. It talks about the development of guiding principles in a comprehensive funding plan to maintain long-term sustainability of the pension. The policy itself, I guess, was written so that pretty much anybody could read it, including actuaries and lawyers. And if you spent some time and looked at it, you could actually do the calculations if you were an actuary. The second section is funding goals, and it's relatively simple and similar to the introduction. But the idea is to accumulate sufficient assets during a member's employment so that the pension payments when they retire can be made. The accumulation is to occur as a pattern of stable contribution rates. We want to increase the funded ratio. Because, as you know, right now, we're 80% funded as a pension plan. And then we want to maintain adequate assets so that the benefit payments can be made to the members. Section three is a benchmark section. And this does a couple different things, but one thing is to track the progress of the funding objective. In terms of that tracking, we use a funded ratio that you've seen before. As I mentioned, it's 80% right now. And then for the meat of the operational piece of the Appendix B policy, we're going to refer to the yellow language. It goes back to the Citizen Committee's recommendation. It says, "The actuarially determined employer contribution rate." So what the committee was shortening as ARC. A more updated and generic term way to say it is the actuarially determined employer contribution rate. But that is to be the greater of the normal cost rate or the sum of the normal cost rate plus the UAL contribution rate. So normal cost, as you know, is if everything goes according to plan and you're 100% funded, that's the percentage rate that the city should contribute. We need to put the normal cost in and also address the unfunded accrued liability. The next sentence says, "A negative amortization payment shall be applied only if the plan has been at least 110% funded for the current and the prior two years." It's going to take a while before that happens. But I wanted to point that out, that there is language in this policy to address when the plan becomes 110% funded, should that happen in the future. And the next section down is called actuarial methods and assumptions. Go to sheet. The actuarial cost method that is stated in the funding policy is the same method we're currently using. It's called entry age normal cost, so there really isn't a change there. It's just restating. The asset smoothing method is the same method we're using now, the five-year smoothing method. The assumptions, same method as we're using now. They're just all stated, and we work with the actuary to develop assumptions. We have a five-year period when we do an experience study. On the next page, page three, there's some things in yellow that are of importance, operational manner. But the first two paragraphs are really something that I'd like to just read because they're important. For the actuarial report prepared August 31, 2016, amortization period of the unfunded liability shall be 28-year closed term. It's 28 because we started at 30 a couple years ago. Next year is going to be 27. It's going to be 26. So for the $50 million UAL amount that we have right now, it's a 28-year amortization term to pay that off. And that goes down every year. That's why it's called a closed term. This will be designated as the UAL base for subsequent, and the remaining years shall be the 30-year period. So they go down a year every, every year after that. The new thing is the bit in yellow. It says, "For each actuarial valuation report subsequent to 8/31/16, any net experience gains or losses," in other words, a new UAL number, "that number is going to be amortized over a closed 20-year period." So if the pension doesn't earn seven and a half percent or if salaries are higher than expected or there's a change in any of the assumptions that compared to what was expected, the liability increases, that liability itself is going to kept separate and amortized over a 20-year period. The current liabilities are on this 28-year decreasing. New liabilities will be on a 20-year decreasing. Same thing goes for if there's a good experience, better experience than anticipated. That better experience will also be amortized over a 20-year period. There's a sentence in here that says, "Subsequent amendments or changes in actuarial assumptions that create a change in the UAL will be amortized over a demographically appropriate time selected by the plan administrator." That is in there just to cover ourselves in case of a change that we don't anticipate. Let's say there's a benefit change one way or the other, and we don't want to take the hit or recognize the improvement all at once on that. So we will work with the actuary to define what an appropriate time period is to recognize benefit changes, perhaps, some change outside of the normal scope of what's going on. The next paragraph is my last bit that I will read word for word. In yellow, it says, "If the valuation shows a surplus," in other words, if the funded ratio is above 100%, "the prior amortization bases will be eliminated, and then one base equal to the amount of the surplus shall be established." So right now, we're 80%. When we get to 100%, this is, this is what happens there. We have risk control, which allows the plan administrator work with the actuary to run some different scenarios to see where we're at. And if things need to be investigated, we can do that. The funding policy review basically says this document needs to be looked at every five years to be updated. So my example, I think, will actually be helpful in terms of putting all this together. If you would be so kind as to look at the bottom of page one and the words that are in yellow there. These words describe what will happen when the pension is less than 100% funded, which is the current situation. Following the Citizen Committee's recommendation, the operative language is that yellow language. The ADEC, instead of ARC, it's called ADEC, actuarially determined employer contribution rate, shall be the greater normal cost or normal cost plus the UAL rate. So what that really means in my layman's type terms is that from the current 80% that we're funded, until 100% funding is reached, the city contribution shall be putting in normal cost plus some more money to address the unfunded accrued liability based upon the amortization periods that we've discussed below. So we're going to be putting in normal cost, the greater of normal cost plus UAL for the net, for, from 80 to 100%. Once we get to 100%, which is the second paragraph of page three, the operative language is, "If the valuation shows a surplus, which is the funded ratio above 100%, the amortization bases will be eliminated. One base of the amount of the surplus shall be established, and that shall be amortized over a period." The amortization period of a surplus shall be a 20-year open period. Now, what this means in my simpler words is that from 100% to the 110% that we've already talked about as a cap, the city is going to be putting in normal cost, just normal cost. There isn't any unfunded accrued liability, so it's just normal cost at that point. And then if the funding percentage continues to go up and hits 110%, that's where another sentence that's highlighted in yellow comes into play, which is back at the bottom of page one. It says, "A negative amortization payment shall be applied if the plan is at least 110% funded for the current and prior two years." So now we're 110%. We still put in normal cost. The next year, we're another 110% funded. We're still putting in normal cost. Third year, 110, still putting in normal cost. So once we have three years of 110%, the next year after that, we're going to start amortizing our surplus once again over a 20-year period. So then instead of putting in normal cost, we may put in a little bit, we're going to put in a little bit less than normal cost to amortize the surplus down. When the evaluation is done, if, if the funded ratio drops below 110, then we have to have a new three-year period where we would hit the 110% mark to, before we start amortizing any surplus. So really, the plan is to put in the greater of the normal cost plus UAL until we get to 100. Then we put in normal cost. And then when we get to 110% for three years, then we can start putting in a little bit less than normal cost because we're amortizing our surplus. So we don't, the design of this is basically someday to get to 110%, but basically not to go much above that. And then I also wanted to tell you that we did do some sensitivity analysis on this to show what happens, what if the plan earns less than seven and a half? What if they earn more than seven and a half? It's basically built into that 20% amortization rate. So are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Right.
So 110% funded, and then we kick in the negative amortization. Why 110%, why not 115? Why not some other number?
When we're making the policy, I had that type of discussion, and that is a good question. The answer was, we started out maybe with 105. We were thinking about that. We wanted a little bit more to make a bigger cushion for potential downturns. There is, and I probably will have to give this over to Pat for an explanation of what one standard deviation of return difference means. But one standard deviation and the practice that other places have used got us to the 110%.
So I guess my follow-up question, that would be, I see 110% there, and I've got an explanation for why that is. But in 2008, we lost 40% in a year, less than a year.
I think it's about 30%.
Okay, it's 30%.
Yeah.
So why, why not say 130%?
Well.
So I guess I'm saying.
Yeah, and that's a good question. And what we're trying to do is use a balance of fiscal, I guess, conservatism and responsibility towards not only making a cushion for a potential downturn, but also not having too much. On the taxpayer perspective, the question is how, what kind of funding level is too much? When should we start saying to the taxpayers, "Well, now we've, we've got a cushion built up, and we can start putting in a little bit less money." It's a subjective call, and the 110% is the number that we came up with after looking at other practices and other.
And so when you say "we," you're talking about who exactly?
Myself and our actuary.
Okay. So since it is.
And of course Doug.
It's subjective. It wouldn't throw everything for a loop if there were some other number put in here, if there was a rationale for that number.
You know, I think we tried to apply a rationale, even though we said it was subjective. We talked to our experts in the process. Again, I think it's a balance of trying to have a reasonable cushion without having too much of a cushion that maybe deviates from other city needs. So how much you fund beyond actuarially, you know, and what's responsible. While it's a decision, we tried to bring some element of objectivity to maybe a subjective number.
What's the total plan dollar amount right now?
It's 220 million.
Okay, so you'd have like 22 million in 10%. That's a pretty good cushion. If you're over that, then you have guys starting to knock on the door and ask for more benefits, which may not be desirable either, considering you could have a 30% drop in some year. And if you go and look at.
Which is what happened back in the day.
Yeah, so if you go and look at places like South Dakota, where they have this type of policy in place, they don't, they don't go much beyond 110%. And this idea in the pension committee really came out of looking at the best practices around the country for what was out there, and one was South Dakota. Yeah, in the down years, when you have an unfunded liability because the markets go in the wrong direction, those are the hardest years to put money in the pension. But those are the years where you have to put it in because otherwise you hurt yourself fiscally. So if you go and look at those tables and look, you know, after our amortization period drops off, there's a boatload of cash there that could be put into other programs. And so if you can keep it at 100% or close to it, you'll really help the city out fiscally.
Again, we have our actuaries here. If you have specific questions, we can certainly invite them up.
I'm curious about the closed terms and the shifts in the timeframes. And if you could just expand on that a little bit, about how, how you determine those timeframes and the benefits of doing that.
You're talking about the amortization schedule?
Mm-hmm.
The.
Paul, do you want Pat to speak to that? Or do you want to speak to it?
I'll give it a try. 30 years was the result of 30 years being basically the longest recommended time period to use to amortize an unfunded liability. And then the, it used to be a rolling 30-year period for a few years. And then it was decided in 2014 to close that time period and make it a, as we're doing now, 29 left or 28 years left, 27 years. It's a more responsible thing to have a closed amortization period than an open period because basically, an open period is almost like having an intention never to pay off your unfunded liability amount. The 20-year period comes from the Citizen Committee Exhibit Eight. There's a public sector letter that kind of does a survey of Government Finance Officers Association. And they recommend this tranche setup where new UAL amounts are put in a tranche separate from the $50 million that we have now. And each one of those is treated individually over a 20-year period. They're, they're recommending a 20-year period rather than a 30. So to be a little bit more aggressive and in line with what the GFOA best practices are, we moved to the 20-year period.
Roy had a question.
So, so if somewhere down the line, maybe we're all buried by then, I don't know. We have another big downturn like 2008, and this policy's in place. What flexibility will the mayor and city council in that day have? And is there flexibility for their response built into this? Or are they, outside of changing an ordinance again, what can they do in this context?
If it is a large downturn in the market, and that large downturn translates to a large uptick in the city's contribution. And when I, when I say translates, there is a process to get that mitigated, really. Any downturn isn't realized immediately because we've got the five-year smoothing that we're going to realize only a fifth of it in any given year. And then of that fifth, we take the fifth that we recognize and amortize it over 20 years. So there'll, there'll be quite a bit of smoothing regarding recognizing a large downturn. If that is much, if it's more than the city can handle in terms of a budget change, then I guess it would go back to the city council as either some other things need to be cut in order to fund the pension or a amendment to temporarily cease funding in this manner could be implemented by the city council. Those are only two things that I can think of.
I think mine is more commentary in nature. I think, you know, for us to expect that a funding policy would stay in time, you know, throughout infinitum, obviously, we're not stating that. We're trying to do the most responsible thing as it is today. But I think responsibly, we continue to evaluate our policies as we continue to see actuarial returns and plan valuations and adjust accordingly. Not that we rewrite ordinance every year, but when we start to see trending, that may be the time we need to respond and react for the, for the good of the pension plan and for the city as well.
Sure. I guess my question boils down to the fact, for example, if this policy we're looking at now had been in place in 1985, things would be significantly different today. And so I guess I'm asking for the future. You know, is, is this the best thing we've come up with? Will we prevent, can we prevent all of those heartaches? Probably not, but, you know, if we have a 30% downturn in 2025?
Well, I think with, with all issues, financial, stock market, pension plans, hindsight is 2020.
Right.
And if we all had perfect crystal balls, then certainly what would be in place would have prevented what we experienced in 2008. We do think this is the best possible policy we can have at this point in time, given what we've seen and given what actuarially can be projected. Hopefully, that's a fair statement.
So I have another question for Rick.
Okay. Okay.
Well, pay attention.
Okay. That's why I called it out that way. So we delayed this a week so that the administration could talk to the fire and police unions about this. Where do we stand with that discussion?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
In the mid-morning.
Okay. So we don't know what their take on this is yet?
Just from the initial discussions I had with a couple members of IAFF, I think they're concerned about an agent amortization. I think they would like to see, they go beyond 110% because they would like to see possibility of COA someday, is my understanding. I feel a little uncomfortable speaking for them, but that was what was expressed. Now, whether they express that tomorrow, who knows?
Okay.
Hey, welcome, Carl. Jane, do you have any questions?
Well, that was my question, if the unions had an opportunity to review it. But I guess maybe this is a question for Trent. This is really not significantly different than what was recommended by the Citizens Task Force, correct?
No, not at all. I mean
So it's not as if it's something sprung on the police and fire unions?
No, it's not. It's actually right in line with what the guidelines were. And this will be the second one of, what, 12 recommendations that have been made that have been implemented? Certainly, the other 10 would be moving us in the right direction.
And I just wanted to follow up on the things that we need to be aware about as we, aware of as we undertake this policy change. And Roy touched on them, I think, and you answered frankly, Paul. But basically, you're saying that this is going to put us in a position that, that should we have more difficult times, this will take priority over other expenses in the budget, correct? That funding this is mandated. So do you have any other concerns or reservations or anything else we should be very aware of before we cast our votes?
I don't. I think this is a responsible policy. I think any individual could question, is it too liberal? Is it too conservative? I think that goes to, you know, where we stand in terms of good fiscal management for the city, given the fact that there's so many competing priorities for funding across the city. To cut this off at 100%, you know, someone might say, "That's not, you know, appropriate." To fund it to 130, 140%, someone else could say, "That's not appropriate." So it's always going to be to a degree of where the individual stands on the matter. We think it's a responsible policy. We think it moves us forward in terms of responsible funding of the police and fire pension and providing the benefit that we've pledged to these employees. So.
Are our actuaries going to feel a lot of pressure to play with percentages if we get three years at 110% funding and it starts to dip? Are they going to feel the, I was a joke, it was a bad joke. Sorry.
I don't think our actuaries will feel any more pressure than they currently do today.
Sure. Sure. And are these 7% or 7.5% assumptions still in place, given that we had?
7.5 is still in place.
Has there been any discussion of altering that just in the wake of not quite hitting it this year? Or are you still feeling like that's a responsible percentage?
There has not. We work with our investment advisors on that. We did the sensitivity analysis, which is a due diligence process as well, to say, "Okay, what does that look like?" We still feel that 7.5 is appropriate. Again, hindsight can be 20-20. We could be sitting here five years from now, looking backwards and saying, "That was too liberal." I can't say. You know, there's varying opinions on that, as there is in everything else. But we do feel that 7.5 is in line with what we see with other plans and with the same thing that our investment advisor recommends.
And Rick, how will you communicate to us the results of your meetings tomorrow? Just email? How should we expect to hear?
I'll just pick up the phone and call you. But I could certainly talk to you next Monday at Directors as well, whenever you want. No, it's going to be a little slow. You need to hear from me sooner than that because the issue will come up. I'll just call you.
Night meeting next week, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have directors.
I'll just give you a buzz on Wednesday.
Okay. Carl, did you have any question? I know you weren't here for it, but is there anything? Okay. Can we get this emailed to us? Thank you.
If you want the highlights, send the email.
If it works.
I mean, we can do that if you'd like. I just want to make sure that, you know.
Yeah. If you just email us as an attachment. What?
With highlights and without.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.